Welcome to the regular briefing session of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Today's briefing is going to be for Thursday, September 16th meeting, and that'll be coming up in a few moments. We have three serious reports, one from Joshua Swift, who's going to give us a COVID-19 update. Next, we'll have Karen Barnes, who's going to talk about Agile Cities. And finally, our own attorney, Gordon Watkins, talking about redistricting. By the way, before we begin, I would like to once again mention something that most everybody knows, but just before Joshua Swift, who runs the Public Health Department, comes on to talk about the problems related to COVID-19, David Friedman, who is one of the top criminal attorneys in the United States, passed away this past week. David's a resident of Forsyth County, has been for years, and he had COVID. He had the shots, he wore the mask, but he passed away from that disease. And having said all of that, let's move right into Joshua Swift for a COVID update for today. Mr. Swift.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll go ahead and open up my slides real quick. So this first slide shows a number of cases that we've had in Forsyth County over the last 14 days, 3,019 cases. Our average cases per day for the last 14 days is 215. You can see the deaths over the last seven days. There's 11 deaths from August 31st to September 6th, just in Forsyth County. And in that same time period, there's been 165 individuals admitted to the hospital for COVID-19. You can see the vaccinations, 63% of the population 18 and above is fully vaccinated, and 68% of our population is partially vaccinated. This last week, we saw a downturn in the percent positivity of persons getting tested for COVID. So we saw it go from 14.4, the high to 12.8. We hope this is a trend that we continue to see the percent positivity go down. This is on a weekly report, so we're hoping that next week we see that same trend going down. The next slide, looking at our COVID cases per week, sort of the same way, we hit 1,504 for the week of 8/22 to 8/28. Over the whole month of August, we had right at 5,000, roughly 5,000 cases. That puts us, our all-time high was in January when we had 5,600 cases. So pretty close to our peak that we had in January. And now we saw a little bit of a downturn to 1,409, and we're hoping again that stays the same for coming weeks throughout September. One place where we haven't seen necessarily a decrease is the percent of cases that are pediatric, that means zero to 17 years of age. So you can see by the different age groups, the number of cases. And just overall, the week of 8/22, August 22nd to August 28th, 20% of our cases were in these age groups, zero to 17. And the week of 8/29 to 9/4, 29% of our cases were in this age group.
Joshua, I hate to interrupt, but in those cases that you talked about before the deaths, have any of those transpired that were pediatric cases of death?
Any pediatric. In the county, no, we have not, that I'm aware of, any pediatric deaths.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And the next slide is a slide you've seen before, looking at the vaccine distribution across the county. And you can see it broken down by race and by age. We are seeing the 12 to 17-year-olds, that number is going up with 38% of that group that is now fully vaccinated. And as I stated before, 68% of adults are now partially vaccinated and 63% fully vaccinated.
Joshua.
Yes, ma'am.
That 68%, has that not gone up since last week? Is that?
I believe it was 67%. I'm looking off to the side. I have a whiteboard in my office. And to put this into perspective, in on 5/31, we were at 57%. So it has grown throughout the summer. Our goal was to hit 70% by Labor Day. We didn't quite meet that mark, but it was, and you're right, it was 67% last week on the end of August, August 31st.
Do you contribute that to the gift cards?
I think so. I think we're seeing gift cards, more individuals are coming in to come get the vaccine. We've seen an uptick. Yesterday was a slow day, a little over 200 individuals, but we've had days since the gift cards were available where we had over 500 people come through. Also increased participation at our events. Also, I think we're just seeing overall, more people are going to get vaccinated, not just here, but in other places because of, you know, concerns with the rising cases.
Thank you.
Yes. And then my last slide, this shows one I showed you before, this updated from the University of Washington, looking at across the state, basically seeing what we're seeing in Forsyth County, that our cases are up, we're at around the January levels. Hopefully, as you can see that middle line, that we're just, this is a plateau, and then we start going gradually down through the fall. Hopefully, we don't see that uptick where it reaches a new peak. So hopefully, we just ride this off and it starts to go down in the fall. So that concludes my brief presentation. Be happy to take any other questions.
Questions for Joshua Swift?
Well, Joshua, I would ask you a question. I wasn't quite sure whether the gift card program is still in effect or not, or have we resolved that?
Yeah, it is still, it is still in effect. It is still in effect, and we are working through the inventory of gift cards that we have.
Thank you.
Karen Barnes, if you could come forward, we're ready for your report. And Joshua Swift, we certainly report. It's always good to have you on, but it's always difficult to accept some of those figures. And thank you again for the update on COVID-19. Now we'll continue our meeting with Karen Barnes on Agile Cities.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me back. I welcome the opportunity to update you on the Venture Winston Grants Program. The last time I was here, the Venture Winston Grants Program was an idea, an idea to help support and recruit the next 100 startups to our community in the next five years, an idea to help diversify our community's economic base, and to leapfrog into future-focused sectors that will help define us for the coming decades. An idea that you voted to support with an investment and understand if the model could work. Today, I'm pleased to share with you that the model does work. We have launched it, and I want to share with you the accomplishments we have seen so far, and to ask to begin some conversations to restart that investment interest on your part. Let me start by catching you up. In February, we received our first tranche of operational funding, and we used this funding to hire a competition director and to launch our brand. On May 1st, we opened our application period. Our portal was recruiting for startups in three future-focused sectors: the future of aviation, the future of healthcare, and the future of food and nutrition. We secured partners for each sector: Aero-X, a local nonprofit that partners with private and public industry in the drone and eVTOL spaces; Novant for Healthcare; and Dairy Management Incorporated, the trade association of the U.S. Dairy for the future of food and agriculture. We closed our application period June 30th and saw results well beyond our expectations. We landed 1,200 applications from all 50 states and 22 countries. That was 10 times our expectations. 75% of those applications were from outside North Carolina, giving us strong local participation as well as a robust out-of-state pipeline. 68% of those applications were from founders who identified as either women or minorities, signaling that our intentional outreach for diversity, for diverse talent and teams worked. Our website attracted 50,000 users, and our social media campaign raised the profile of our community with 20 million social media impressions. But this ecosystem shared in our success. When we identified startup applications that didn't quite fit our criteria, we shared them with our partners. Through collaboration with other accelerators and incubators, we tripled their number of applicants for the Center for Creative Economy and for Flywheel's New Ventures Accelerator. We're also sharing information with Greater Winston-Salem for follow-up recruitment efforts. Over the last few weeks, our team of 50-plus evaluators has narrowed the field and selected 15 startups to the final pitch competition. And I've provided you with a brief overview of those that have been invited. I will tell you, this is one hour old, one hour old. We just released these finalists an hour ago. You will see that we have five who are from Winston-Salem, giving us 10 from outside of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County who want to come be part of our community for the next year. The final pitch competition, we beheld October the 9th. It is called Disrupt Winston. You are all strongly encouraged to join. And we will announce our final grant winners of $50,000 grants in early November. Those grant winners will be asked to start their 12-month residency here in our community in January of 2022. So as you can see, this is working. Our community now probably has the strongest startup pipeline of itty city in the state. Based on this success and your past vote to support our program, we'd like to restart negotiations to fund our operations for the next five years. And since our last conversations, we've built out a more robust public-private partnership business model that includes additional funding from our sector sponsors. We've run a full recruitment cycle and understand what our real costs are. We have very concrete metrics to determine our economic impact. We're asking Forsyth County to consider an investment of $200,000 a year for the next five years to help us bring and nurture the next 100 startups to Winston-Salem. This represents about half our annual operating budget excluding grants to the startups. We will raise that money privately, which will be approximately $1 million per year to fund the grants for the startups. We will be working with foundations and our private sector sponsors to raise that money. This seed money will help us change the economic face of our community and create opportunity, jobs, and additional capital worth well beyond your investment dollars. We're grateful for your past support and look forward to working with you to continue to build a prosperous economic future with our community. Thank you.
That was a heck of a report. Questions for Karen? I will say this, first thing I looked at, got my attention, was this bright orange photo.
Orange is my favorite color.
Worked out very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Folks on the board, Commissioners on the board, we have been through quite a bit over the years. We have districts, the 5th District Congressional Seat, the 6th District Congressional Seat. In the city of Winston-Salem, they have the East Ward, the North Ward, the South Ward, wards go on. And on our own board, we have District A, District B, and At Large. And now we're going to find out what all that means, simply because our county attorney, Gordon Watkins, who is slowly approaching the podium, has to tackle the rumor that's been going around regarding redistricting. It's all yours.
Thank you. I'm trying to pull this up. Okay. Commissioners, I appreciate you having me here today. I'm going to go through a quick run-through of the redistricting process at a high level, explaining how the process works. So as the chairman just explained, we have two districts, District A and District B for the Board of Commissioners. They were established in 1989 by the General Assembly when they passed a local act, Chapter 260, which established the electoral districts for the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Those consist of District A, which is primarily East Winston-Salem, and that district elects two commissioners. The rest of the county is included in District B, which elects four commissioners. And of course, there is an At Large Commissioner, which is elected by the entire county. As you know, this is the same general setup as the Board of Education, except they have three At Large Commissioners. And before I go on, because those districts are set by the General Assembly, we can't change the general setup. We can't determine that we want to have a District A, B, and C. We have to still have the two districts and the At Large, since that was passed at the state level. So what I'm showing you now is a map of the current districts. Yellow is District A, which again is primarily East Winston and a little bit of North and South Winston. That has grown a little bit over the years as population has shifted. And so District A in 1990, 2000, 2010, after those census, it grew a little bit so that the population would be proportional. So the basics of redistricting, as you know, every 10 years since the founding of this country, there's a census. And so that was conducted in 2020. It was, for various reasons, including the pandemic, the results were late coming out this year. Typically, we get them around March, so we have plenty of time to do redistricting. This year, they didn't come out until just a few weeks ago, in mid-August. And before I go any further, I really want to thank Matt Forsyth. They've been a big help to me in preparing all this information. And Brian Tuttle in particular, I call him the Michelangelo of redistricting because he's drawn so many beautiful maps for me. So pursuant to the U.S. Constitution's one-person-one-vote requirement in North Carolina statute 153A-22, local government must redistrict if there is what's called a substantial inequality of population among electoral districts. And so a substantial inequality has been defined in a couple of different ways, but the clearest one is that it exists if any district is either 5% larger or smaller than the ideal district. And an ideal district is one in which the population is exactly the same as the proportion of commissioners elected from that district. So that's not hard to understand if we had single-member districts, but we don't. We have multi-member districts. And so what you do to determine an ideal district is we only look at the commissioners who are elected in each district. We don't need to consider the At Large seat. So we're looking at the six seats. So District A elects two of the six commissioners, so it should ideally be 2/6th or 1/3rd of the county population. And accordingly, District B would be 2/3rd of the county population. So the current county population is 382,590, and that's from the most recent census. So luckily, it's divisible by 3, and so the ideal district size for A would be 127,530, and District B would be twice that number, or 255,060. Unlike past census results, there has been a similar growth of the districts in the past 10 years. B has not grown substantially more than A, although B still has grown proportionally faster than A. And so what we see is District A population with the current districts as they are today is 123,420. If you divide that by the two commissioners, you get 61,710. And with District B, it's the remainder. And so if you go through that math, District B population per commissioner would be 64,793. So you can see that the District B population per commissioner is higher than District A. The ideal district size per commissioner would be 63,765. So the end result of this is that District A is 3.2% smaller than ideal. District B is 1.6% larger than ideal. So the rule, the rule is that if the districts are within 5% of the ideal, you don't have to redistrict. So it would be possible to retain the current districts. You would have District A being proportionately smaller, but that is a possibility. So this is what, again, what the current districts look like. On the other hand, what we see is District A is 4,110 people less than what an ideal size would be, which is a pretty good margin. So if the board is inclined to make it more close to the ideal size, there are four precincts that I've identified that you could consider adding to District A. So you'd move one of these precincts from B to A. And so those precincts are 033, 122, 601, and 905. And I'll show you maps of those as we go forward. So this is the first, and these are just in numerical order. There's no judgment here as to which one is better. Yes, sir?
Does the law require these districts to be contiguous to each other, these precincts?
Yes. The general requirements are compactness- The general requirements are compactness, which is not defined, but they do definitely have to be contiguous. We can't have a satellite portion of a district. And you know, you've seen at the state level, there's been decades of litigation over especially congressional districts, but also state districts. And you remember the district that stretched from Charlotte, I think, to Durham. And so I think a judge at one point said that if you're driving down Interstate 95 and you open up both your doors, you could kill half the people in the district. So that was not considered compact. But we don't have that problem here because you can see we have drawn the districts in the past to be fairly compact. So this is what, adding 33, which is highlighted here, is to the north of the county. It runs along commercial and industrial areas on the north side of Patterson Avenue. You can see toward the bottom is the Vulcan Quarry there. And moving up a little bit, you see Sam's Clubs and those developments, Haynes Brand. But it goes all the way up north into rural areas, goes very close to Horizon Park, actually. So it stretches up along Germanton Road. The population would put District A 0.2% over the ideal size, so it is very close in population. The next is 122. That's in the southwest part of what is now District A. 122 was formed, it's a little confusing. Tim Suji and the County Board of Elections have split some precincts because the population was just too large. And so 122 was split off of the old 122, which is the Griffith, so that the remainder of that is 121, and the new part of it is 122. That stretches west from Peters Creek Parkway. And so kind of in the middle to the right, you see Lowe's and the Walmart there, and it goes off into more suburban areas there. And that would be 0.6% over the ideal size if that were added to A. The next one is 601, which is right in the middle there. And 601 is, it runs along the south side of what I still call Business 40, but Salem Parkway. And it goes from God's Acre and Salem College and Old Salem in the east, west through West Salem over to South Hawthorne and the parking deck of Baptist Hospital over there. That is a small district, so even adding that would yield a District A, which is 1% under the ideal size. And finally, the last option would be adding 905, which would kind of fill a gap between 903 and 904 there. 905 is the other half of Wake Forest University. If you look toward the bottom of it, that road that goes in and out, that's the Wake Forest Road that goes right through the middle of campus at Wake Forest. And so, for example, the soccer field of Wake Forest is in 905, and it stretches along Renolda Road and Bethaba Road between the two, and it stretches all the way up to Bethaba up there. And that would be 0.7% over the ideal size. So as you can see, all of these would be within 1% of the ideal size if you were to add a precinct to A. And finally, this came up recently when we were talking about ARPA funding, the idea of qualified census tracts, and those are defined by HUD. They are lower-income census tracts. And you can see, this is a little hard to read, but I'll try to explain it to you. The red is the current district border between A and B. And so what you can see is the yellowish color are the qualified census tracts, and they don't follow precinct lines. And there's a substantial overlap between the qualified census tracts and District A. The four precincts that are optional here to add to A are all crosshatched. And so you can see 33 is to the north, and then 905 is below that, and then 601 is right in the middle, and then at the bottom is 122. Those are all crosshatched. So what this shows us is that 905 is almost entirely in a qualified census tract. The part that's not is Wake Forest University. 601 is also in a qualified census tract. 122 is not, and except for a very small portion, 033 is not in qualified census tract. What this shows is some commonality between some of these precincts and the current District A. So that is my presentation for today. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Gordon? You covered very well.
Thank you.
Any idea when the General Assembly will start working in this area where the county is a concern? If they do?
They are working on it. The question is when they'll conclude. It'll have to be sometime this fall, but I have no idea when that will be.
I thought I'd give you the opportunity. You could predict it.
Gordon, one other question. How will we be having some further discussions relative to this before it's voted on?
So the plan, my plan, unless you tell me otherwise, is to come back next week with this and to have a first briefing. And so there will be a first briefing next week, and then, of course, a second briefing the following week. And then if the board is ready, it would be voted upon in public session on October 7th.
Gordon Watkins, County Attorney. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we return to Karen Barnes? There wasn't really an opportunity to ask.
Ms. Barnes, if you'd come forward. Our vice chairman would like to speak with you.
Yes, sir.
I just had some, I mean, I remember this all, I mean, our work on this occurred literally days before the pandemic, before the shutdown began.
Yes, sir.
And my memory may not be accurate, but I do remember that, I mean, there hadn't been a whole lot of money raised. I mean, it was the fundraising was kind of getting ready to begin. I remember the discussion was really centering around the city and the county, kind of helping, as you suggested, kind of this infrastructure part. And for us, I know that what we had approved actually expired at the end of the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Had not been spent. So it requires us to kind of redo, but could you remind me what we actually agreed to back then?
It was a long series of negotiations, Commissioner Martin, and it involved some economic incentive money that was granted to Inmar Intelligence. I can tell you that the city did exercise their option for that, and we were granted that money under an agreement with where the city gave that to Inmar, and Inmar signed it over to Agile City to pursue this program. You would have to talk to Inmar if they were willing to do that deal with the county. I can't speak on their behalf.
Yeah, well, my memory, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but my memory was that basically there was a desire from Inmar's standpoint, that was, obviously, it's been a strong supporter to have some, not just the economic development incentive payments to them, but to also have some city dollars that were not incentives and some county dollars that were not.
Correct.
And it's kind of spread that out over a five-year period where essentially, and I think the words may have actually been, there was some skin in the game every year, you know, to go forward. But I don't remember what the skin in the game number was. I haven't asked anybody about it. I don't know what it was.
Currently, there's no funding outside of the economic incentive money from the city. That doesn't mean we won't be asking for it.
Okay.
So we absolutely plan to go talk to the city as well. I would have applied for money through the EDA for this program. I know there's lots of money available for the EDA, but this program is not eligible for that money because it actively encourages companies to move. So that made us ineligible.
Well, that helps some. So but basically, all the money, you feel like this first group that's coming in, you'll select the winners from it.
Correct.
And I also don't remember this part. Is it $50,000, one time?
Yes, it is a one-time.
One time, then come here, get started, and then at the end of the year, it's kind of, I mean, what happens? Anything?
Right. So it is a one-time $50,000 non-dilutive, non-equity grant. The only thing that we require from them in exchange is that they have to move 51% of their operations to our community for a 12-month residency period.
Right.
During that time, we have also hired a cohort manager that will be a concierge-level service available to them, and we are very hopeful and optimistic that we'll be able to retain a good number of these startups after the mandatory 12 months.
And I remember this was patterned after St. Louis Project.
Yes, sir. It's patterned after the Arch Grants in St. Louis.
And was the model in St. Louis the same? There was a one-year period?
Correct.
And I think it was $50,000, too, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
One-year period, and was not their retention rate pretty high?
Their retention rate is 90%.
And has that remained? Is this, because we're now another 18 months down the road.
Yes, sir.
Is those, I assume the grant program still exists in St. Louis?
Yes, sir.
That, and they're still experiencing a 90% retention rate?
Not only a 90% retention rate, but they have created over 2,000 jobs, over $350 million in additional payroll and follow-on investment, and 75% of their founders are women or people of color. So we are absolutely using that as a benchmark. And I'm pleased to say that in our first year, you know, we've done an amazing job. Everything that Arch Grant said we could expect for our first year, we blew past. So we are very excited about it and feel like we'll only continue to build from here on out.
Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Karen Barnes, you're just magnificent.
Oh, thank you, sir.
You answered every one of those questions.
Appreciate it.
And you actually knew what you were talking about, so.
I would hope so. I've been working on this for three years.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
I do have one other question, Karen.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I just prompted another. Do you have a budget for the operational side for this five-year budget? This is kind of your ask, if you will, of us.
Right.
I mean, what that total budget would be and what it would be spent for, because this is the operational part.
Absolutely.
You're raising the money for the grants.
Correct.
That's outside, but in terms of actually the operational, I'd love to see a little more detailed.
Absolutely. Happy to provide that.
Budget about what that request even looks, what that looks like.
Be happy to provide that. We estimated, so the Arch Grants has a $1.2 million annual budget. So we wanted to come in at about half that, and our original budget projection was about $637 per year. But we worked really lean and really smart this year, and our actual expenditures are going to be closer to 450. So we are asking the commission to consider $200,000, which would be approximately half our operating budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just about give you $200,000 just for the performance that you gave today.
I'll take it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One question, please.
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, wait, wait, we got, now we got you.
Good. I love lots of questions. This is wonderful.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Of those five Winston-Salem startups that are listed here?
Yes.
Any insight, possibility one of them might be selected?
Oh, I think they're very strong contenders here locally. Yes, sir. Very strong. We made a concerted effort to reach out to all of our local startups that fit the criteria. Some of them, we did a little handholding, some we did a little dragging to complete their applications, but we are very excited about our local applicants. Yes, sir.
But we've got a good way to go towards September 16th, which is a week from today. If you want to come back, we'd be delighted to have you. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Dudley Watts, our county manager. What you got today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do need to finalize the agenda for the Thursday, September 16th meeting, and we do have one matter for closed session. So when we adjourn here, we'll enter in that. So I'll go ahead and dive into the agenda for the Thursday, September 16th meeting. We can get this finalized. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment proposed by Edward Nichols, modifying Section 5.4-2E of the Unified Development Ordinances pertaining to temporary use permits for turkey shoots. And I'll turn it over to David Reed, I believe. We'll do that presentation one more time and then have any discussion you need to have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Before Mr. Reed starts, could I ask of the board that we continue this item until our meeting on October 7th? I'll be out of town next week, and I would really like to be present for the vote. And I make a motion that we continue until October 7th.
I don't have any problem with that, but discussion, your thoughts on this?
No problem. Second, second motion.
Second motion from Commissioner Martin and Fleming Elamine. Further discussion? All in favor of Mrs. Wizenhun's motion? Please say aye.
Mr. Chairman, there's not, there's not really a vote.
Oh, that's right. This is a briefing session, isn't it? That's okay. I think we're all agreed.
I agree with Ms. Wizenhun's suggestion.
Thank you.
Everybody is vocally agreed, but of course, you don't have to take that down, Mr. Attorney, and I appreciate your mentioning that. I get used to this. If you want to say aye, that's fine, but that won't count. But I think we'll go ahead and let it go.
So from a management perspective, we will put this item on the agenda for that next cycle.
Sounds good to me. How about the gentleman standing with his hands crossed?
Discussion, right. For the discussion?
We would put it on for that next cycle for action.
So we go through two briefings?
Yeah, same thing. Dave, do you have any comments about that or any issues?
So we'll brief it next week and the next?
We would brief it next week as an introduction.
Is that satisfactory?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Item two is also a planning item. It's a public hearing on a zoning petition of Mark Thompson Sheehan from RS30S to an AG to AG to agricultural. It was reviewed by Chris Murphy last Thursday. It was pretty straightforward. Do you want him to redo that presentation or are you good?
I got it.
Got it? Okay. You did such a good job last Thursday. You're off the hook. Very good. All right. Item three is a resolution requesting abandonment of a portion of Copeland Road from the North Carolina State Maintained Secondary Road System. David Reed reviewed that. He's here if you have questions.
Questions, comments?
All right. Got the minutes, which probably went out?
They went out today.
Today. Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item five, you got an amendment to the 2019 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance. It transfers residual funds to the 2018 Smith Reynolds Airport Capital Projects Ordinance for capital maintenance projects. You got the associated amendment to the 2018 Smith Reynolds Airport Capital Projects Ordinance.
Questions, comments?
No. Very good. That's helpful, and that'll help us get some of these projects moved forward. So thank you. Item six is an amendment to the FY22 budget. It increases revenues and appropriations for Forsyth County Department of Public Health, Women's and Children's Health, children and youth branch funding from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Service.
Comments?
Okay. All right. Item seven is also a budget ordinance amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Project Ordinance that approves the authorized projects as requested by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education.
Questions?
All right. We got some grant items. Item eight is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Winston-Salem Foundation for the Cooperative Extension Service for the Community Gardens.
Comments?
Item nine, you have a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and University of North Carolina School of the Arts through its Spatial Justice Studio at the Center for Design Innovation for the Development of the Neighborhood Equity Atlas.
Questions, comments?
I do have a couple.
Okay, sir.
I read this section in more detail between our last meeting, and we discussed the issue of, basically, we did have an RFP. We did send it out. We did get, but just in reading the resolution, this is a semantic part. It's purely semantic, that just gives me a little pause. It basically says that the North Carolina School of the Arts through their spatial, their studio, the Center for Design, et cetera, has proposed, you know, providing Forsyth County. Well, they didn't, I mean, quite frankly, I'm assuming we requested proposals, and they submitted one, and we're acting on that because apparently Forsyth Futures was talked to as well as UNCA, and there was a desire to keep it here locally. And it kind of makes it sound like, are we inviting people to come propose things to us, and then we consider that and not? I mean, I'm just a little, there's some semantics about that that bothered me.
Mr. Vice Chairman, we can certainly tweak the language. That is a valid point. And we did send out proposals to those two organizations, so we can tweak the language.
And the second part is I read the contract kind of through carefully, and I mean, generally speaking, I like it, but there's, again, there's some vocabulary in this that strikes me as, there's basically creating this index. And I'm looking on my thing, as far as, what is the title of that index? I'm sorry, let me find it. I actually had it out in another, where I had it underlined. I don't have it here.
Is it in that Phase III Determination of County in North Carolina Mean Averages for Identified Variables?
Yeah, well, I mean, I understand the variables, and that's great, and the analysis they're doing, but it's going to create.
The more or less equitable census tracts. It's Phase III. Phase four?
Yes, and yes, and we're going to create this, this, I don't think it's an equitable issue. There are things that, whatever the variables that are described, and there could be combinations of variables, you're going to be above the county average or below. And and I mean, just take age, for example. If age was one of the variables and you have an older census track, you don't say they're more equitable, they're older. You don't say they're less equitable, they're just younger. Or if it's, you know, economics, it's they're wealthier, they have a higher, they're higher than the county average, or they're lower. And and it sort of, it sort of bothered me, and if I could find the name of that index, it has a similar connotation that do we want to label all of our census tracts by some kind of that we're, it's kind of like, gosh, what was that?
Distressed, you're on page.
Yes, yes.
It was under Services Section 1, Development of a Holistic Distressed Index.
Yeah, yeah, I went over.
That incorporates relevant variables will allow for the determination of primary costs.
So so by variables that we're identifying that are not a standard by the state or a standard by any other entity, we're going to create an index that kind of says, okay, your census track is distressed and yours is not. And is that the kind, do we want to sort of classify on a homemade scale, that kind of issue? I mean, maybe we want to come up with different terminology on that. I'm just, I'm kind of concerned about where this plays out in the long term and with a contract that uses that language.
Yeah, so the distress, you know, the thing came from, you know, a long time back, 12, 2013 or whatever, where we did that distressed, we identified distressed areas based on the 26 variables that we, that we pulled, that, that really GIS technology created it because what it looked for was levels of concentration. So it did a levels of concentration analysis. What's interesting and what we're interested in is, is how they changed because you plug new data in and then the area changes. And so what this study is trying to do is make that connection between things we did since 2013 that changed it and what works and.
Yeah, I wasn't here in 2013.
Yeah.
And and I haven't heard it mentioned since then. So but I'm just.
Well, it was, it was fundamentally what the United Way did. They, they grabbed it from us and said, we want this. And so they did their place matters work around that.
I do remember that part.
Yeah, and so that's, we quit sort of calling it.
Distressed.
Just, well, it's, yeah, I mean, they, it was more solution focused around that. And so now we're trying to find out.
I mean, I almost think, I can just envision, I mean, if, obviously, if it's not very public, I guess it's not an issue. But but what's real is, well, is that, is this house that I'm interested in buying, is that in a distressed area or not a distressed area? And I just think it gets into some semantics that, you know, I just.
Yeah, I think the areas, valid concern, I mean, we, we were concerned when we put the data together and, you know, but the truth was those, those levels of concentration. I mean, you saw that play out because there were houses you could go buy for, you know, $5,000, you know, for almost no money. And some, in some places, they weren't selling, so.
Well, I mean, why don't we just talk about that we have, that we could even, in this contract, list, these are the variables we want to look at the change. The variables, the variables speak for themselves versus some combination that creates a label. It's labeling. It's a labeling issue that is a concern today.
Yeah. We can definitely tweak the language, but it is an extension from the map that we called since 2013, the distressed map. So it's an extension of that work, but we certainly can revise the contract to use different language to better just identify what it is.
Yeah, because I remember the place matters United Way. I kind of remember the, kind of when that sort of started. And I don't ever remember hearing the word distressed in that, but maybe my memory is fading as I get a little older here. That's a long time.
Yeah, we did a lot of presentations with, with that. And if you go to our Map Forsyth map gallery right now, you'll find a distressed properties map. And it was probably the old one. Has it been updated and, do you remember?
I'm not sure what year it was updated, but it is the most recent that we have.
Yeah, so they have actually been rerunning that data from time to time to, to see that. So it's sort of out there. I think point well taken. We can certainly change it in the language and, and I don't, you know, you want to call them opportunity zones or, there's lots of things we could, we could certainly call them. But as we get into the work, it does make sense that we have the right.
To identify those areas.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, I'll, we'll reach out to y'all and see if.
Yeah, well, the opportunity zone has a, it has a connection with a federal definition and a link.
Yeah.
And that part, that's kind of out there. That's a federal, it's, but we're creating our own designations. And if we, if we can tie into that designation, well, that's great. But are tied to some other sort of statewide something or other, I don't, I don't know. I kind of like things that are below and above.
Yeah.
We got averages. Obviously, we don't want to be, and you'd like to think they're measures of good things, and you don't, nobody wants to be below average. You'd like to be above average. I don't know. No, I'm sorry. I wasted too much time.
Commissioner McDaniel, do you have a comment?
I do not.
Okay.
One comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
I have a copy of the distressed map, Commissioner Martin, and I've looked at it pretty thoroughly of those houses and primarily it's economic factors. Some of those properties have been almost abandoned for years, and there's a need to have some attention of some sort. But I think the word distressed is just referring to economic factors for the most part. So in that sense, it describes it very well. In fact, I'd be glad to share with you, it's on my desk right now.
Well, maybe economically distressed is a terminology that's better than just distressed because then we're describing it is economic.
Distressed, yes.
I don't know. I just, I just, it just struck me the wrong way.
Yeah. Point well taken. We'll do some work on that. I think that what you call something does matter. And so, very good. Any, any other questions or comments on that? Okay. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing execution of a facilities use agreement between Forsyth County and University of North Carolina Chapel Hill for the school's social work program they run there. Comments? Okay. Got some property matters, and Chelsea did a good job with those last week. Got three of them. You got a resolution authorizing termination of the lease with Cardinal's Innovations Healthcare with the intent that partners would assume part of that property at least. Item 12, a resolution authorizing execution of lease between Forsyth County and Monarch for the lease of county-owned property located at 651 North Highland Avenue. And then the last, a resolution declaring certain county-owned surplus, personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction.
Questions or comments?
A whole bunch of appointments. We've taken out, I think, the one that Commissioner Martin had actually missed, mentioned at the last meeting. Any other updates on these?
Number one.
Commissioners, you have the applications, and the process closed yesterday at 5:00 PM.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. All right, we've got reports. You got tax success for collective refunds and August 2021 contribution-based benefit cap report. And then Commissioner Wizenhun had actually sent us a more ceremonial kind of resolution that we went ahead and added. It's the naming September 2021 as Preparedness Month in Forsyth County, which was unveiled as sort of the, one of the efforts by the NCAC. Commissioner Wizenhun, do you want to add anything to that?
Actually, Frank Williams, who's president, this year's president, NCAC, this is his presidential initiative. And although he lives in Brunswick County, I think we all need to be up to speed on being prepared. We never know what is around the corner. So I would just like for us to adopt this resolution and be in tune with the state.
Any comments?
Okay, good. All right. So the only other thing I had to mention is, as you know, y'all have all received comments from, from folks, particularly over in Clemens, around the multi-purpose agricultural exposition center we had, that as a management effort, we were proposing to start doing some design work on Entanglewood. We heard the, heard the frustration. We wanted to measure that, so we put a survey out. That survey closes next week, and it'll be my intention, even though it's a formal meeting and briefing, at the briefing, to go ahead and present those survey results to you and then probably make a management recommendation about sort of next steps with that. So I'll be planning on doing that next Thursday. And the only other item I have, excuse me.
Mr. Manager, agenda item number six was not briefed last week because Adam Pendleberry wasn't here. I don't know if you want them to brief it today. It's for the $6 million for the school nurse program.
Okay. Let's do that. Adam, are you on the line?
Hey, this is Joshua. I'm here for that.
Okay, great.
So Commissioners, this is Agreement Amendment 362 from the state. Also have Glenda Dancy, Assistant Health Director, and Frances Williams Supervisor on the line. This is basically public schools. It's an incentive for schools to opt-in to school-based testing programs. Funds are provided to primary school nurse employers, which we are the primary school nurse employer in Forsyth County. Forsyth County does have some nurses, but we have the majority. It's approximately 25 health departments across the state that will be part of this funding. This is one-time funding that we know of now. It is through the 30th of June 2022. The purpose is to provide temporary funding for local health department school nurse employer, which is us, to hire either registered nurses and related school nurse support staff such as licensed practical nurses, LPNs, and unlicensed assistive personnel, UAPs, to work in the schools that opt-in to the testing program for the 2122 school year. And as is stated, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools made that announcement a few weeks ago. There'll be testing that'll be mandatory for all students participating in athletics and other extracurricular activities. The intent just broadly is to put a nurse or a professional LPN or a UAP into each school to assist each school not only with their COVID response, but, you know, this is going to be one, probably the most challenging school year that we've ever seen. And really, just with keeping the kids in school, you see, or I said earlier in my briefing at the start of the meeting, how we're seeing more cases in that school age group. But also, we have hundreds, probably thousands of kids because they weren't in school, everything was remote, that need vision and hearing screenings, and there's lots of things to catch up on with, just their normal daily part of their health and their, the plans that each student has to have that requires any medication or any guidance. So be happy to take any other questions. And like I said, I've got.
Any comments, questions?
Joshua, I do have a question. I think I'm sure, but I'm not quite. The mask mandate for the school system that was approved?
Yes, yeah, the school system that require masking for all students in the public schools. All system legislation came down from the General Assembly, where that'll be looked at every 30 days per school system.
There you go. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
All right, thanks, Chantel. Appreciate you reminding me of that. Unless there's anything else, just have the closed session motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have one thing. I know, just having a little offline conversation with Chantel Robinson about sort of the, just gun violence issues and things that are going on. And actually, she reminded me that there's an initiative already going on, talked to some folks. What's the name of the program in Chicago?
It's the Cure Violence Model.
Yeah, right. Cure, C-U-R-E, Cure Violence Model, that, and in light of the, sort of, our activities and gun violence we've experienced in the last, you know, week, it seems like that would be a really relevant thing to maybe bring forward a little. Apparently, they're coming back to make a report. And hopefully, at the time when that report comes back, we could, as a, as a county, could host, you know, a lot of community folks that would be interested in hearing that report, which allows us perhaps some suggestions, concrete ones, to build on how we do a better job in this community and basically stopping gun violence, period. And I think getting that out is something that we're already had underway, and here's a way to, you know, invite a lot of the community and make it a, it's already has a lot of the community in our internal planning group outside the county. But it would be great if we had, you know, a much broader audience, I think, for that would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Yes, so we do have a Cure Violence Steering Committee that actually met for the first time last week. Just to give you an idea, the current members are the school superintendent, Winston-Salem PD, the sheriff's office, Department of Juvenile Justice, Judge Hartsfield, Commissioner Elamine, myself, Dr. Jack Manell, who's a professor of Justice Studies at WSSU, Councilmember Taylor, Assistant City Manager Patrice Tony, the Judicial District Manager for Adult Probation, the DA's Office, JCPC, and we're looking to invite the hospitals as well. But as you said, it is an initiative. We're trying to get Cure Violence to come here to Forsyth County, Winston-Salem, to do an assessment. And so they will come in and do an assessment later this month or early next month at the